Good evening. Before tonight's meeting, we will have a student from Albert Cammon lead us in a moment of reflection. Following that, Mr. John Smith will lead us in the pledge. But a little bit about the student. Leanna Walker from Albert Cammon Middle School will lead us in a moment of reflection. Leanna is an eighth grade student at Albert Cammon Middle School and very involved honor student. Leanna is a member of the ACM Soccer and Track Teams, District Honor Band, and active member of the Growing Young Responsible Ladies Club. Leanna has earned Principal's List, placed in the Young Authors Contest, and is an integral part of ACM Student Government, holding the office of Student Council Secretary. Principal LaShawn Porter says Leanna Walker can't hide or pirate pride. Would everyone please stand?
If you will, please bow your heads while we give all honor and reverence to our King of Kings. Heavenly Father, as this successful school year is destined for a final descent in just a few days, we'd like to humbly express how grateful we are for each opportunity you present us with, including being gathered here at tonight's board meeting where critical decisions are made. Thank you, board members, for having in the forefront of every decision you make what is in our best interest, as well as that of all who have a role in ensuring success for all of our scholars. Lord, continue to impart your wisdom unto our brave and bold board members regarding all school-related matters, especially those linked to the social-emotional wellness of all and the academic achievement of each of our scholars. I pray for the continued strength of all this board to include Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling, our Assistant Superintendent, all executive staff members, all directors, principals, assistant principals, and most of all, I pray for our truly dedicated teachers and all other support staffs who are committed to investing in our future. In closing, Lord, despite all challenges in our natures continue to face, frequently remind us to always seek you, praise you, and always give thanks to you, as it is a blessing for you and I to be citizens of the United States of America. We trust and believe in you, Lord. Therefore, in your most holy name, I pray, amen.
I call to order the meeting of the St. Charles Parish Public School Board Meeting from Wednesday, May 10, 2023. And as a roll call, let it be known that all board members in attendance, including our Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and our Board Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. First item on the agenda is what I think everybody's waiting for, 2.01, is Board and Superintendent's recognition.
Honville High School student placed first in the Regional Science Fair Competition, Lakewood Elementary School student placed first in the State Social Studies Fair Competition, Dushehan High School Wildcat Robotics Team 3039 won the first Robotics Magnolia Regional Competition, while ranked first and won the first, won the World Champion Newton Division Team Spirit Award. The team was named semifinalist in the World Championships Newton Division Competition, ranking fourth in the division. Academics and athletics. School system students were named to an LHSAA All Academic Composite Team, Dushehan High Athletics. School system students were named to the All District Tennis First Team, Dushehan Honville High School Boys Tennis Team is the district and regional champion, and Honville High School Girls Tennis Team is the district champion. Dushehan High School student is the district, regional, and state long jump track and field Yep.[756.01][756.01](Applause) Marley, you can actually stay up there, I've got some more for you. I've got some more awards for you. School system students are individual district and regional track and field champions. Marley Richard, 100-meter, 200-meter, and triple jump champion.[773.82][773.82](Applause) Honville High School Madison Bailey is 100-meter champion and district most valuable School system students are individual district track and field champions. Dushehan High School Boys Track Team is the district champion. School system students were named to the All District Softball First Team, Dushehan Honville High School employee was named the District Softball Coach of the Year, You could just stay up there. School system students were named to the All District Baseball First Team, Dushehan High School John Carmichael, also most valuable player.[1319.83][1319.83](Applause) The Dushehan High School Baseball Team is the district champion.
I'll just make some brief comments. It's springtime, and you've noticed that we had all these spring sports in this track, baseball, softball, so forth, and it's just an honor to see this room filled up, and it's just a privilege to serve on this board for St. Charles Parish because we have outstanding people and outstanding athletes and so forth, but it just makes me feel so good to see so many people in. So thank you for coming tonight. We're going to take a short recess, and then we'll continue with the business portion about me, if you want to, I mean, meeting. If you want to stay for the meeting, you can, but tonight, you're welcome to leave at this time. Thank you.[1635.66][1635.66](Laughter)
So I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. The first item is 3.01, which is Board Minutes, and that is from the meetings of the technology meeting on April 24th, the committee meeting on April 24th, committee meetings on April 26th, board meeting on May 8th, and technology meeting presented as the board. So... Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mrs. Weber. Any discussion? And that item passes. Next is 3.02, revision to 5.4.1 Policy Procedure Selection and Adoption of Textbooks and Instructional Materials Second Reading and Adoption.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions of board policy and procedure 5.41, selection and adoption of textbooks and instructional materials for second reading and adoption.
Second. Seven, motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? And that item's adopted. Next is 3.03, which is textbook adoption.
Mr. President, I move to adopt a consent agenda for items 3.03, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, 3.07, 3.08, and 3.09 to receive the recommended instructional materials as presented to the board for a total of $190,461.34.
Second.
Second.
Seven, motion to consent agenda for 3.01, 4, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06... Second motion to consent agenda for 3.01, 4, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, 3.07, 3.08, and 3.09. Is there any discussion? Okay. Excuse me, 3.03. Any board discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.10, which is the policy 3.6.3, expense reimbursement, second reading and adoption. Upon review of board policy 3.6.3, expense reimbursement, revisions were required to align the policy to best practices. This agenda item was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the board on Wednesday, April 26, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to board policy 3.6.3, expense reimbursement for a second reading and adoption.
Can I get a second? Second. 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 If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.11, job description revision. In alignment with best practices, job descriptions are reviewed over a three-year cycle. The superintendents are responsible for recommending job descriptions, revisions to the board. Several revisions are being recommended. This agenda item is reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, May 8, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve job description revisions. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.12, personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item is reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, May 8, 2023, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented. Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this time I'd like to give special recognition to one of the appointees on this particular personnel item, which is Mr. Sean Dwyer, who will be next year's principal at Harry Hurst Middle School. We look forward to him leading Harry Hurst Middle School for the near unforeseeable future, right? Mr. Dwyer, that's right.
Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next up is 3.13, bid acceptance, child nutrition program.
Mr. President, this item and the next five items pertain to food supplies and equipment for the child nutrition program. The Finance and Audit Committee covered these six items during its meeting on Monday, May 8, and is recommending approval, and I think the board is prepared to approve these items. So therefore, I move to adopt a consent agenda for items 3.13 through 3.18 to accept the lowest bids for food supplies and equipment as listed for an approximate total of $2,661,000.
A second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreaux. Any discussion?
And just for clarity and transparency, the six items are bid acceptance for child nutrition program supplies, bid acceptance for child nutrition program milk and milk products, frozen food products, and processed food products, bid acceptance for child nutrition program bread and bread products, bid acceptance for small cafeteria equipment, bid acceptance for large kitchen equipment, and proposal acceptance for USDA Southeast Commodities Process and Cooperative Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And all those items are approved. Next up is accounts payable for the month of April 2023. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customly paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, May 8, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of April 2023 in the total amount of $12,209,706.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Just like to note that more than half of that was out of the capital projects fund, and almost $7 million of the $12 million was out of the capital projects fund.
Thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Sufferin. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. Shelley, did it pass? And that item passes. Next is 3.20, which is revised budget for fiscal year 2023. The board approved the budget for each of the various funds on July 20, 2022. State law, Louisiana Revised Statute 39:13:10 mandates that a budget be revised when a variance of 5% or more occurs between operational expenditures and budgeting estimates. Prudent financial planning mandates periodic review and revisions of the budget for each fund. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, May 8, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt a revised general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital projects funds, and lunch fund budgets.
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreaux. Any board discussion? At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Ronald White, our chief financial officer, up to do a presentation on the revised budget. Mr. White?
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to make a short presentation that summarizes the revised budget that's being presented to the board this evening. This budget revises the district's original budget that was approved in July of 2022. It covers all the funds that have just been described, all the funds of the district, and approving this budget will ensure that we comply with state law, and it also serves as a good foundation for financial planning and budgeting for the coming year. Some of the major items that are included in the revised budget are an increase in general fund revenues of approximately $16.5 million, which includes an increase of $900,000 in ad valorem tax revenues, an increase of $10 million in sales tax revenue, an increase in $2.7 million in investment revenue, and an increase in $2.9 million in state and other revenues. On the expenditure side, a total of $12.3 million has been added to the general fund and construction fund. Salaries, retirement costs, and health insurance costs are being projected between March and the end of the year, and in order to make sure that all of these items are included, all of the amounts are included, a conservative approach was taken to ensure completeness. Additionally, certain expenditures were added to the budget for costs that arose during the year, and these include the higher-than-expected property insurance cost, increases in certain personnel costs, which includes the substitute staffing and certain classified positions that were added to the district, additional safety and security costs, which includes additional resource officers and an independent safety assessment. We had additional repair and maintenance costs, which included one new position being added, and we had additional recruitment costs as well as a restructuring of the operations at the LPAC, which included the addition of one new position. And for all of the other funds, an overall increase in revenues of $15.4 million is included in the budget, which includes $7.2 million of insurance recoveries in the Hurricane Ida Recovery Fund, which were not included in the original budget, and we also had an overall increase of $2 million of expenditures in the other funds. And I'd be glad to take any questions from the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to note that the, you know, for the public's benefit and for transparency, the revised budget is available for the public to view on our website through our board docs.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that budget's approved. Next is 4.01, which is standing committee reports. If there's any chair or committee member that'd like to give a report about committees that met in the past month, please do so at this time.
Mr. President, the Technology Committee met on March 8. We were presented three proposals from the top three that we selected, and we will have that hopefully on the June board meeting to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. John Smith, Mr. Ray Gregson, met this past Monday on May 8. There were two items on the agenda, and both were put toward the board this evening. We also commended Ms. Teresa Weber and her team and the job that they're doing with regards to teacher retention and recruitment. The sheer number of position openings at this time of the year compared to the last few years has dropped significantly because of their efforts. In addition, her team's proactive approach to attracting local teachers to our district is welcomed and is being noticed and is indeed appreciated, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, May 8, and we covered eight items. As I noted earlier, six of those items pertain to the child nutrition program, and the other two were the accounts payable for the month of April 2023 and the revised budget for fiscal year 2023. All eight of those items came to the full board during this meeting and were approved, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
The Curriculum and Instruction Assessment Committee met on Monday, May 8, which includes Mr. John Smith and Ray Gregson. All agenda items were approved during tonight's meeting, and I as well and the board would like to thank Ms. Erin Gragnier and Mr. Matt Spitz for doing an excellent job with our textbook selections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on to 4.02, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Orling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hanville High School's graduation will be held Wednesday, May 17, 2023. Dusterhan High School's graduation will be held Thursday, May 18, 2023. Both ceremonies will be held at the Ponte Train Center for 6:00 PM. Spring testing. Each spring, the Louisiana Department of Education administers assessments known as LEAP 2025 in grades three through eight. Students in grades three through eight will take computer-based LEAP 2025 assessments. The LEAP 2025 will be administered May 5 through May 12. High school students enrolled in LEAP courses will take these assessments May 15 through the 17. All high school students not taking LEAP assessments will participate in asynchronous learning on these days. Please contact your child's school for further information to LEAP 2025 assessments and schedules. As of today, due to Hurricane Ida, the school system has incurred a total of $50,897,567 in recovery expenses. We are projecting future costs to be approximately $4.1 million, including $3.6 million for large construction projects and $1.9 million for smaller ones. We have received $37,471,565 in insurance payments thus far. As a reminder, there will be early dismissal for all St. Charles Parish Public Schools students on May 22, 23, and 24, with the last day for students on May 24 and teachers on May 25. We also begin a four-day work schedule from May 30 until July 17 here at Central Office. This has been a tremendously successful school year for our employees, families, and community. The return to somewhat normalcy after experiencing three challenging years has been a breath of fresh air for our school system. This year, we expected excellence from every level of our organization to accomplish our mission of developing empathetic, involved, productive, and responsible citizens by providing every student high-quality educational opportunities that empower each to become enthusiastic lifelong learners. I'm grateful for the hard work, planning, innovative approaches, caring attitudes, and high levels of sacrifice from each and every one of our employees, support of you or board, and the close collaboration with families. I would like to wish everyone an enjoyable, restful, and safe summer, and we cannot wait to see you again next year. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Orling.
I move to adjourn.
So I have a motion by Ms. Boudreaux, a second by Mr. Sufferin to adjourn. Does anyone disagree? If not, we stand adjourned.